Madam Chairperson, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
We do have one letter that will be read with the case.
Okay, thank you. So let's move into our public hearing. If you haven't joined us previously, let me just briefly describe how we conduct business. The city will basically call the case by the case number. They'll read a brief summary of the case. We ask the appellant to speak up, state your name and address for the record, please, and then explain to us what you're asking for and why. The city will then read their findings of fact. We ask you to agree with those or add anything you'd like at that time. Then the city will read their recommendation. Then we'll turn it over for a public comment and then back to the board to deliberate and make a decision. So will the city call the case, please?
For ZBA case 21-14, the appellant Frank Adwish of A&amp;S Properties LLC, representing the owner Al Wazir Properties Group LLC, is requesting the following variances from the board: A variance of 12 and 1/2 feet of landscaped side yard along Fairfax Street. 15 feet required between 2 and 15 feet proposed. Please note, this is a change from the legal notice. And a variance of 8 feet of landscaped side yard along Marshall Street. 15 feet required, 7 feet proposed. And the property is located on the north side of 12 Mile Road between Fairfax and Marshall Streets at 012 Mile Road, West 12 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcels 2412-478-035 and 037 Zone B3 General Business and P Vehicular Parking. This appeal is to Section 5.194, Subsection J, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance, and please note, this is also a change from the legal notice.
Thank you, Sarah. Is the appellant here?
Yes. Good evening, Paul Weisberger. First, let me ask, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Paul Weisberger, representing the appellant. My address is 1100 West Maple Road, Troy, Michigan. To tell you that we're happy to be in front of you tonight is an understatement. We have spent about eight months working with staff, Kyle and Terry and the crew, to try and find a replacement home for Walgreens. Walgreens is currently located at the southwest corner of Greenfield and 12 Mile. Their business model no longer supports that large of a building and they will be leaving that building one way or the other. We've been asked by them to try to find them a home so they can stay in that part of town, in the city of Southfield. We did locate a property on north side of 12 Mile Road between Fairfax and Marshall. We've been through Planning Commission, work sessions and meetings, received positive recommendation for both the site plan and rezoning, and then also did workshops and meetings with city council and received approval for the site plan as well as a first reading on the rezoning. So the only thing left for this project to come to fruition and keep Walgreens in the great city of Southfield is some landscape buffers. So what I'd like to tell you is that we have, as part of our sensitivity to the neighborhood, as well as suggestions received from staff and planning commissioners and city council members, we have increased the buffers where we can, which would be the northern property line. In fact, we even acquired a home to assist with some of the buffering on the north end. And then we've actually already closed on the real estate as well. And we also have, as you can see in the staff report, we are removing 16 damaged or poorly conditioned trees and we're going to be replacing those with four evergreen trees, 190 shrubs, some perennials and some ornamental grasses. I think the best slide to articulate what's going on here, and Sarah, I don't know, or Brianna, if you guys can flip to the landscape plan that we provided in our application materials. And before I forget, I want to thank everybody for attending this special meeting. I know spending your nights at the ZBA on a beautiful night like tonight is not exactly what you wanted to do, but we appreciate it. So if you look at this slide, you'll see that the entire site, for the most part, is rimmed with hedge bushes or hedgerows running north to southeast to west. We did that as part of trying to knock down some of the impact as well as any of the vehicular lights that might occur during nighttime. We are extending the sidewalks on this property. That is one of the issues we have. We're extending the sidewalks from the north down to 12 Mile. And in doing so, there's a kernel, I believe it's like transformers or electrical equipment that are currently found in the right-of-way on the east side of Fairfax. So we had to jut the sidewalk into the property, which prevented us in that small little section from being able to place the extension of the hedgerows. We, in lieu of that, put up a decorative fence that goes along those four or so parking spaces that are on the Fairfax side of the property. So with that, we're anxious and hopeful that we receive a variance for the buffering, landscape buffers, and really excited to hopefully get this project off the ground and keep Walgreens in the city of Southfield. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
For ZBA case 21-14, the appellant Frank Adwish of A&amp;S Properties LLC, representing the owner Al Wazir Properties Group LLC, is requesting the following variances from the board: A variance of 12 and 1/2 feet of landscaped side yard along Fairfax Street. 15 feet required between 2 and 15 feet proposed. And again, this is a change from the legal notice. And a variance of 8 feet of landscaped side yard along Marshall Street. 15 feet required, 7 feet proposed. The property is located on the north side of West 12 Mile Road between Fairfax and Marshall Streets at 0 West 12 Mile Road, Sidwell Parcels 2412-478-035 and 037 Zone B3 General Business and P Vehicular Parking. The subject property is mostly undeveloped, but contains one single-family home fronting Fairfax Street. The properties to the north are zoned RA Single Family Residential and are developed with two single-family homes fronting Fairfax and Marshall Streets respectively. The properties to the south across 12 Mile Road are zoned OS Office Service and are developed with the Bloom-Conheim Law Office Building and the Chiropractic Natural Health Medical Office Building. The properties to the east across Marshall Street are zoned RA Single Family Residential and OS Office Service, and are developed with a single-family home fronting Marshall Street, a playground for the IXL Learning Center and the Baby Genius Learning Center. The properties to the west across Fairfax Street are zoned RA Single Family Residential and OS Office Service and are developed with two single-family homes fronting Fairfax Street and a multi-tenant general office building fronting 12 Mile Road. The total site contains 1.17 acres of land with 240 feet of frontage on 12 Mile Road, a depth of 216 feet along Marshall Street, and a depth of 210 feet along Fairfax Street. The approved site plan proposes the demolition of the existing home fronting Fairfax Street and the construction of a 9,400 square foot Walgreens pharmacy with drive-through. Parking required is 38 spaces with 38 spaces proposed. The building elevations reflect a mix of brick, wood and metal panels. Five-foot-wide right-of-way sidewalks will be constructed along both Fairfax and Marshall Streets, closing the sidewalk gaps that exist between the single-family subdivision to the north and the existing right-of-way sidewalk along 12 Mile Road. Section 5.195, Article 22 of the Southfield Zoning Ordinance states that "In the B3 General Business District where a side lot line abuts the street, a landscaped side yard of not less than 15 feet shall be provided." Along Fairfax Street, the landscape width is deficient for a combined distance of approximately 102 linear feet, or about 49% of the 210-foot frontage. This is partially due to the need to shift the required right-of-way sidewalk along Fairfax onto the Walgreens property to avoid existing utility boxes and overhead wires within the Fairfax Street right-of-way. Along Marshall Street, the landscape width is deficient for a combined distance of approximately 135 linear feet, or about 63% of the 216-foot frontage. Increasing the landscaping along both Fairfax and Marshall Streets would eliminate required parking spaces, cause encroachment into minimum driveway widths, eliminate the required right-of-way sidewalk along Fairfax Street, and/or decrease vehicular circulation on the overall site. The applicant is proposing wider landscape buffers than required along the north property line and north end of the property along Fairfax Street. 15 feet of landscape width required, 23.2 feet of landscape width proposed, which will provide a substantive buffer between the property and the residential homes to the north. Additionally, either a wood fence or masonry wall will be installed along the north property line and the appellant is discussing the preference with the property owners to the north per their site plan approval conditions. The approved landscape plan indicates the removal of 16 trees, all of which are either dead or in poor condition. The approved landscape plan reflects the installation of 16 deciduous trees, four evergreen trees, 190 shrubs, 39 perennials and 45 ornamental grasses.
Thank you. Does the appellant agree with those facts and is there anything else you'd like to add?
I do agree with those facts and I do want to point out some nuances, but just to show the level of commitment we have and attempt to cooperate. You know, we, instead of putting the required fence on the very northern property line, we moved that fence in places so that it actually goes into our property and provides the neighbor to the north with more of a side yard. For all practical purposes, if you drove down the street, you would think he acquired some additional property. So we were sensitive to that and we did move. For those of you who can't see the picture, on the north side of the property, we did, and are proposing to put in a masonry or wood fence, whatever his druthers are, and put it within our property, I think six or seven feet, so that he can have a little more space before the fence there. I also want to note that during the evolution of the site plan, we were asked to move the drive approaches that come off of Fairfax and Marshall as far south as we could, but still maintaining truck vehicular traffic, moving those approaches or entrances so that they are across the street from non-residential uses. And so I just wanted to point that out. But other than that, we agree with the facts and I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Will the city read the recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is to approve based upon the following findings: Increasing the landscape width along both Fairfax and Marshall Streets would eliminate required parking spaces, cause encroachment into minimum driveway widths, eliminate the required right-of-way sidewalk along Fairfax Street, and/or decrease vehicular circulation on the entire site, thus creating the need for additional variances. Closing sidewalk gaps is a primary objective within the city's comprehensive master plan. Without shifting the right-of-way sidewalk onto the private Walgreens property, thus decreasing the landscape width and increasing the dimensional variance request in this area, a connection between the existing sidewalk along Fairfax Street and the existing 12 Mile Road sidewalk would not be possible due to conflicts with existing utilities and overhead wires. The appellant worked with the city landscape design coordinator to provide the required tree replacement based on the city's woodland ordinance as well as provide adequate separation and buffer between the site and the properties to the north through installation of wider landscape buffers than required within the zoning ordinance. The approved landscape plan is expected to provide significant aesthetic upgrades to the site as part of the Walgreens development and all waivers requested are expected to have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties.
Great, thank you. Let's turn it over to public comment. Brianna, do we have anybody on the line who wishes to speak on this case?
Hi, Jody. It's Brianna. We don't have anyone on the line, but Sarah would like to read a letter that I received from a resident yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, yes, there was a letter that was received. It's dated May 14th. It's actually received today, May 25th, from Cora Properties LLC at 29084 Marshall Street, Southfield, Michigan, 48076, addressed to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Dear City of Southfield, in regards to the appeal case 21-14 of the proposed rezoning of property PZR 21-0003 to create a Walgreens with pharmacy PSP 21-0004, I am strongly against it. My reasons for objecting to the propositions are as follows: It will create an unsafe environment, an unnecessary hardship for children and other family members walking in the street due to increased customer traffic during weekdays and weekends. It will create excessive noise in a residential subdivision, especially uncontrollable noise during off-peak hours when residents want to come home and enjoy a peaceful environment and quiet surroundings. The proposed Walgreens is still adjacent to the residential zone and will be too close to the surrounding houses. In the Santa Monica Daily Press article, "Walgreens: A Neighborhood Nightmare", they also mention the detrimental noise pollution created from building a Walgreens store. Quote, "Another issue is 24-hour operation, meaning plenty of noise activity around the clock, engine noise, car alarms, door slamming, blaring car stereos and loud conversations in the middle of the night will constitute a continual nightmare for neighbors living and trying to sleep literally 23 feet from the proposed store and its parking lot." And there's a link to the article. They go on to say, "The Walgreens understandably will need to use a dumpster. This will create an additional noise in the neighborhood, especially when the garbage truck empties the dumpster and throws it back onto the pavement. Since there are residents who have solely nighttime shifts, they are only able to sleep during daytime hours. They are within, excuse me, 100 feet at the proposed location and the noises from emptying the dumpster daily will likely wake them up in the middle of their sleep. The surrounding residents along the perimeter of the proposed Walgreens will not be able to enjoy sitting outside the front porch, not be able to enjoy letting the children play outside the front porch, not be able to enjoy communicating with their neighbors on their front lawns. The height and scale of the building will destroy the view for neighboring residences. Most Walgreens have a flat roof and occupy several thousands of square feet. Thus, the rectangular structure becomes very apparent when a resident is in their home looking at the skyline and can cause depression and even ruin their quality of life. Note, if they were to build a structure with a pitched roof 30 feet from the ground level to the peak of the roof, then the building would not block a significant portion of the skyline. If the proposed site is converted into a commercial zone in the future, if this property is sold to another individual, he/she will not be able to convert the property into various..." I'm sorry, he/she will be able to convert the property into various possible commercial venues, including a parking structure, fast food restaurant, retail store, et cetera. These potential scenarios will further increase the noise pollution and inconvenience the surrounding neighbors. Therefore, I strongly feel that business zoning should not be allowed in this residential area. This variance of approved will go against the neighbor's interest and safety. All of these factors would create lower property value and less desirable living conditions. We feel that a harmonious solution would be for Al Wazir Properties Group LLC and DeLorean Huey to purchase their site in a commercial zone and not to encroach onto the residential zone. Sincerely..." Says Cora Properties, but I can't read the signature. I believe that's it.
Okay. Sarah, what was that address again?
The address is 29084 Marshall Street, which is actually, if you can see, the house just to the north along Marshall, along the west side of Marshall, it's right across the street from that. So it's basically on the east side of Marshall.
So it's the second house?
Yes, it's, yes, the second house on the east side of, yes, right there.
Okay.
And I did want to, if I could, to the board, just to point out, you know, the rezoning has already been approved and enacted by the city council as has the site plan. You know, obviously, the board is simply considering these landscape variances at this time.
Right. Thank you. Okay, so we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Ms. Lesney, you're first on my screen, so.
I'm sorry, Jody, were you talking to me?
I got it. I unmuted. Okay. The project is very, very nice. It's a typical Walgreens. And they do keep their properties fairly clear. And I like the fact that the, that you don't enter through the back, you enter through the sides before you actually get to the residential areas, except for like one house. And since this is for the landscaping, I think it really is a very reasonable configuration that they proposed. And the fact that they have a landscaping problem is a hardship, but the hardship is sort of self-created because that is the way they're designing it. But if they don't design it this way, it would make no sense to develop it. And I think in the long run, the development is a good thing. It's basically on 12 Mile Road. And I think it's a judicial use of the property and I have no objection. Oh, by the way, is it a 24-hour?
I'm glad you brought that up. No, it is not 24-hour.
Okay. Is it, does it plan to be or?
No.
I know, some are and some aren't.
No, it does not. And I also want to point out that the, 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 all of the garbage in there is non-perishables. It's like cardboard and that. And if you look at the site plan, which I don't know if you have it, that is located on... Okay, that is located on the west side of the building, much closer to 12 Mile Road. And since you let me unmute, I'm just gonna say one more thing. And that is that we had a traffic study done at the bequest of the city council and 95% of the traffic comes off of 12 Mile Road. So the side roads most likely would be used by the very people to the north that want to run up to Walgreens and get something. But the vast majority of traffic comes through, is gonna come through 12 Mile Road.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with the landscaping, you know. I sympathize with the neighbor who wrote the letter, but I think he has an issue with the entire rezoning and not the specific landscape variance that we're discussing today. I think the landscape plan is gonna make it look as nice as it can on that site. And so I have no issues with it.
Thank you. Mr. Wygum?
Yeah. One of my first questions to the appellant is, why are you moving from the current Walgreens that is just within a football field of the proposed? What's the reason?
Yeah, Jamie, who's the regional manager for Walgreens, would tell you that back in the 80s and 90s, Walgreens business model was to set up a pharmacy, but with a front end that had a significant amount of convenience products, pops and chips and toilet paper and you name it. They have realized, unfortunately, over the years, that there are many players in that field, whether it be your grocery store, or sorry, your gas stations that have increased all their offerings as well as your 7-Elevens convenience stores. They are now downsizing many, many, many of their stores. I, not, the directive is to downsize them. They are, if you were on the phone, they would tell you that they are not making it work. And by making it work, I mean financially at the current location. So they are either gonna shutter the doors and close completely unless they can come up with a smaller model within proximity to that current location. And that's, that's due to a change in customer habits.
So you're saying you may have two Walgreens?
No, no, they would, they would move from the current Walgreens to this location.
So the Walgreens that is currently there is too large? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's too large by about 5,000 square feet or so.
Okay. And they've looked at the model and they can't, they can't downsize it there, right?
Not any further to meet their requirements. But, but, so obviously, the sweet spot is around 9,400 to 10,000 and their non-profitable, doesn't work model is the old model, which is 14,000 plus or minus square feet.
Now, I went out and I looked at the site and, and one of the things that, and the city regurgitated this, that all trees are old and dying, well, that's not true. There is one there that is in, I looked at it, the three big trees, the giant trees are silver maple. One of them is not, it does look like it is in some kind of distress, but the other two are certainly not. Silver maple isn't one of my favorite trees, but just the facts are is that that if you just say, yeah, they're all in there and they're all old and dying, it's not true. The apple trees are, apple trees over on the Fairfax side and they're in good shape and they got little apples on them. Did you realize, of course, that there are lines, utility lines, that one run right across the middle of the property? Have you taken that into consideration? There are telephone poles there?
Yes, yes. We, we were working with the utility company to either bury them or move them slightly to the north.
Okay. Why, in our neighborhood and practically every place we go, there is a retaining wall between the neighborhood and the business. Now, you're saying you're just gonna put up a wood fence. Is that what the neighbors said? Yeah, wood fence is great? I would, I would suspect that the city would, would demand a cement wall.
If I might through the chair to Mr., I'm sorry. If I might through the chair to Mr. Wygum, that was discussed as part of, during Planning Commission and City Council and the resident said that they would prefer to work with Walgreens because they were unsure if they wanted that masonry wall. So we added a condition that Walgreens is going to work with that resident and provide whatever their preference is. And I believe that was alluded to by the appellant as part of his presentation as well. So we're going to leave it up to the resident and the city council was fine with that and it is, was a condition that was read into the record during the site plan rezoning.
Yeah, I just want to assure, I just want to assure you that it has nothing to do with trying to save money. We've, we've offered concrete wall stamped like brick. We've offered masonry wall with real brick. We've offered wood fence if you want some more residential feel. I understand it's not part of the landscaping variance request, but it goes to our attempt to appease the neighbor. So we are, we'll do whatever, whatever it takes as relates to the wall and the materials to be used, but it has nothing to do with budget or money.
What is the height of your fence?
I don't have this spec in front of me. I believe it's 6 feet, but don't hold me to that.
The city has a requirement. What is, what is the city's requirement?
The requirement is 6 feet, but again, it's, the council can waive the wall and basically, in essence, they did waive the wall request and left it up to the resident. So they, they will go with whatever the resident likes, but 6 feet is the typical minimum.
Okay, I know some are 7 feet, but your ingress and egress you have on 12 Mile and on Fairfax? Or Marshall?
We've got, we have the main entrance that will handle 95% of the traffic's off of 12 Mile and then we have two ancillary ingress and egress off of Fairfax and Marshall.
Okay. And you've had no complaints or from anybody from that, from that little tot's play area?
Not to my knowledge, no. And I would tell you, there's probably more noise in the playground than there would be in the...
I'm not talking about noise. I'm talking about danger of cars coming in and out.
Yeah, no, we have not received any complaints from the neighbor to the right. Yeah, no, we have not received any complaints from the neighbor to the right.
Okay, um. Uh, this is Alex Sworman. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you identify? Yeah.
Yes, I'm engineer for the project. May I, may I clarify a couple things? Uh, regarding the wall along the north property line. So we went through this, all the conversations with the neighboring, and neighbors. And the originally, they wanted to change from the concrete wall to the wood fence, which is, we provide that. Later on, they changed their mind and they decided to go with a brick wall, actually. And that's what the latest what we have, the six-foot brick wall per zoning requirement. And they agreed with that. So it is not a wood fence anymore. Speaking of the uh, uh Marshall Street traffic, so the uh, as Cole mentioned, it's only five percent of the traffic going through the street. So majority of it, the ninety-five percent going from the north, uh, from the Twelve Mile to the side. So it's, it's just traffic very, very minimal. And that's what the reason why probably uh, kinder care or uh, uh facilities never complain about this because they realize that the traffic is just really minimal. So.
The thing is, is that if you've been there, and I was there, people that, that leave, that come and pick up their kids or leave their kids, park right there next to the, right next to their uh, to their facility. And I'm, I'm just worried that uh, that uh traffic coming in at, at least on the, on the Marshall side, might, might impact those people.
Well, that's why we were requested to do a traffic, uh, traffic study. And it's good showing that it is no conflict at any, even at the peak time. So.
Yeah. Uh, I, I reserve judgment on this to hear what anybody else says. I am, I'm not, I'm not totally sold on it. Uh, putting this, letting the city council say, yeah, it's okay to put this in a residential area. I guess in their great judgment, they can do those kinds of things. I'm not convinced though that, that uh, you know, we're voting on the, on the uh trees and stuff like that, but I'm not totally convinced that it's sufficient. But I want to hear others.
Okay. Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I would like to just say that I think that the um presentation that Walgreens has is, is, is very good as far as from the landscape buffer perspective. Um, I'm not going to address the ingress and egress because I think that's already been discussed. Um, I find it's unusual to have that utility line where a normal sidewalk would be. But I understand why they have to circumvent going around it. And I really don't have a problem with the landscape buffer being reduced from fifteen feet down to uh twelve and a half. A little less on the other side, um, because of uh the arrangements that have to be made in order to coordinate with the existing sidewalk on Twelve Mile and parking spaces. I think there's adequate landscape, um, that's gonna be on property. So um I would, um, I would recommend.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I tend to agree with uh Mr. Rogers that, you know, in looking at, you know, the other pieces of this have already been decided and already been, you know, discussed at other, you know, committees. And, you know, our purview at the zoning board of appeals is to look at this landscape buffer. And, you know, I think it looks, you know, very nice from the north end to try to block and create as much screening as possible to those neighbors that are the closest. Um, as a bike rider, I appreciate the connectivity of sidewalks. Um, and appreciate that the city is always trying to encourage that with our developments. Um, so I would, I, you know, I'm glad that they're able to connect instead of just, you know, stop the sidewalk, which has certainly happened in other places in the city, unfortunately. Um, you know, and so, I mean, I, I would support what is proposed and um, agree to grant this waiver.
May I ask another question of?
Of course.
Um, what do you plan to do with the uh old Walgreens?
We, we are, Walgreens is a tenant there. Um, it's obviously a very viable piece of property. And uh, you will see across the country, many Walgreens, which historically were old gas station sites at hard corners on major roads, uh, will become repurposed, whether that be dollar stores or subdivided into retail stores. But I, I have no, no, it's not, it's not my, uh, not my property nor not necessarily my concern, but you asked the question. Uh, I, as a former real estate developer, I would strongly suggest that this property will be repurposed uh and do quite well.
Oh, so you're, they're, they're not gonna tear it down or anything? They're just gonna leave it? Maybe someone can use it? Is that it?
I, I don't know what the landlord would do, but uh, if it were my property, I would meet with an architect and see if I could uh divvy it up or try and find a single user to take the whole thing, whether it be O'Reilly Auto Parts or Dollar Store, any, any box that's looking for fourteen thousand square feet.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so is there any more discussion on the board? If not, Mr. Friedman, would you make a motion for us?
Sure. Um, the appellate, uh, Frank Adwish of A and S Properties LLC, representing owner Al Vazir Properties LLC, is requesting the following variances from the board, a variance of twelve and a half feet of landscape side yard along Fairfax Street, fifteen feet required, um, between two and fifteen feet proposed. A variance of eight feet of landscape side yard along Marshall Street, fifteen feet required, seven feet proposed. Uh, the property is located on the north side of Twelve Mile Road between Fairfax and Marshall Streets at uh, um doesn't have an address there, but at Twelve Mile Road. Um, parcel number two, four, one, two, four, seven, eight, zero, three, five, and zero, three, seven, zone B three general business and P vehicular parking. Um, I move that we uh approve the, the uh, the uh, the request for the, the reduced landscaping based on the following, that increasing the landscaping with uh, along both Fairfax and Marshall Streets would eliminate required parking spaces, cause encroachment into minimum driveway lists, eliminate the required right-of-way sidewalk along Fairfax Street, and/or decrease vehicular circulation on the entire site, creating the need for additional variances. Closing sidewalk gaps is a primary objective within the city's comprehensive master plan. And without shifting the right-of-way sidewalk onto the, onto the Walgreens property, um, a connection between the existing sidewalk along Fairfax Street and the existing Twelve Mile Road sidewalk would not, would not be possible due to conflicts with the existing utilities and wires. Um, the, then that the improved landscape plan is expected to provide significant aesthetic upgrades to the site, and that all waivers requested are expected to have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Uh, will the city call the roll, please?
Wait, 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 wait. Uh, I would just like to add something to that, to the uh, what our uh we're saying is that the uh, the wall along the north border will be brick, as stated at this meeting.
If I might through the chair uh to the board, that was something, again, I mean, it needs to be worked out with the property owner. It sounds like they're going towards the brick wall. But that still could be up in the air. They might change their mind. I, you know, that's.
And it's a condition of the other case, right?
Correct.
This is, this is already, this is already final decision by the neighbors, so.
I, I don't want the, the developer to all of a sudden go back to the, the, the board wall, even though that it, that they didn't want that because it's cheaper. And since he stated here that they were gonna do that, I would like that read into the record.
Actually, it's much more, it's actually much more expensive, and that's what we're trying to accomplish.
This is Brianna. We can only have one person speaking at a time for um recording purposes. So if, um, who's ever not speaking, please put yourself on mute. Thank you.
Alex, let me handle this one, please. Thank you. Um, I, I just want to be clear. What I said was expense was not the issue. We would put up brick, or we'd put up wood, or we'd put up stamped concrete that looks like brick, but that's something that we have uh discussed with city council and planning commission and with the neighbor. And the city council um approving the site plan as well as rezoning. Uh, we're comfortable with us working that out with the neighbor. I, I want to make sure clear, I did not say tonight that we will put up brick, uh, because that might actually not be what the neighbor wants. I just want to be clear.
And I wouldn't want to create a condition that conflicts with another condition of another part of this case.
Yeah, the, the, the city council already created the condition that they have to do whatever the neighbor says. If we, if we create a condition that says they have to do a specific thing, we, you know, the, the neighbor won't get to, to, to decide what, what fence is there. And that's the, the condition the city gave, you know, placed on them.
The engineer just stated that he went with the neighbor and they mounted brick.
But they could change their mind.
They could change their mind.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Will the city call the roll, please?
Ms. Defoe?
Yes.
Ms. Selesny?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Okay, so your request is uh for the landscaping variance is approved. Uh, please continue to work through the city um and with the neighbors. And um, we look forward to your project being completed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, I appreciate uh taking your time out tonight to, to hear this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so next up, we have a set of minutes from March sixteenth. I had a couple things. On page five, line seven, as the appellant is speaking, um, his street name isn't listed. Uh, so I, I think probably his street of Farm Brook should be added after two, four, eight, eight, zero. And then on page ten, uh, on line two and three, there's a couple inaudible uh statements. Um, so I'm guessing the sentence was, uh, Brianna, do we unmute the caller to ask if this is the case they're here for? Seems like I say that a lot. Uh, and those were the only two I saw. Did anybody have anything else?
I've one on page forty-one. Um, let me just get to it. There was a little bit of confusion about who was speaking. Um, it doesn't really change anything, but um if we go down to line sixteen, it says have a second, please. And then it says, um it should be uh second by Mrs. Selesny. And then you say, uh, Chairman Defoe says, thank you. Will the city call the roll?
Good catch. Yep.
It really doesn't change anything in the meaning of the, of the minutes, but I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, and if we're making other changes, we might as well correct it. Anybody see anything else? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes with those changes.
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Thank you. Uh, will the city call the roll on the minutes from March sixteenth with uh corrections, please?
Uh, Ms. Defoe?
Yes.
Ms. Selesny?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum? Mr. Weigum, is he there?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Okay, so the minutes are approved and then uh discussion of our meeting on June first.
Um, yep, so that's next Tuesday. Uh, we have four cases scheduled. Two residential cases, uh, one for a front, front yard setback for a porch and a residential lot coverage, and then uh two commercial cases. One is actually a building setback due to a rezoning. And the other is a building height issue for a, a multifamily residential development recently.
We, and we lost a couple cases because didn't we think we were gonna have six or seven?
Uh, hi, Jody. It's Brianna. Uh, we, yes, we were supposed to have six for the June first meeting. The, one of the cases on the board heard tonight, it was for the Walgreens.
Okay.
They requested a special meeting. And then the other case was a residential case for setbacks um, and lot coverage, but they, it was after the plan reviewer looked at the um case for finding the facts, they saw that the request was in um where utility, in easement. So they're going back to the drawing board for their case.
I see. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so any miscellaneous?
Yeah, I have one thing. Uh, I noticed like on several um agendas and on a few minutes, there's no, either no address or no name of street. Um, I'm assuming that when it's dictated that they're gonna come back to it, but I don't think they ever do. Um, it's something new, but it's, I've noticed it several times, so maybe some attention could be paid to that.
If I might, uh, through the chair to Ms. Selesny, um, I know for the Walgreens case, they can speak to that. Um, because it's a vacant piece of property, there's no official address assigned yet. So we basically just use the parcel ID as the reference. And once they bring in their um building permit application, is the, that's when we assign the address at that time. So that, for I know.
A couple other ones in the past. So I just wanted, it just caught my eye because we're, I'm not used to seeing that.
I, I agree. I was, I was confused about that also. Another thing that I would like.
It was just a comment, that's all.
Yeah, uh, one of the other things that I, on the miscellaneous was uh, in our minutes, uh, we talked about the city would have to go look to see that the, the wetland and then the area was surveyed properly and the permits. Uh, Brianna or anybody there from the city, have they done that? And I just look, is curious to know what they came up with.
You're talking about the Farm Brook case?
Uh, I, yeah.
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 Hi, Mr. Weigum. It's Brianna. Um, the planning department does do, has requirements for inspections for wetlands. And they also work with the engineering department. So before, before we even accept a building permit, they have to pass all the planning and engineering requirements.
So I think he's wondering, have they requested their building permit yet for this property?
Are, are we talking about the Walgreens property?
No. The one, the last meeting where there was a wetland.
That, um, two, four, eighty, zero, that permit has been issued. So they met all requirements.
Okay. All right. Any other miscellaneous?
Uh, yeah, uh, I just wanted to remind Brianna that I had mentioned, uh, I'm gonna be traveling um, this weekend. And if she can get the packet, if whoever's getting the package to me could get it to me before one PM on Thursday. If that's possible. Um, if not, if I could get an email of the, of some electronic uh, uh documents, I'd appreciate it because I won't be back until, until uh late Monday night.
Uh, through the chair to Mr. Friedman and um everyone else that requested packets be delivered early. My plan is to do that Thursday at nine AM. So hopefully that gives everyone enough time to check out the cases before leaving for the weekend.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else?
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Uh, the meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-one. Thanks, everybody. Okay, great, uh, the meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-one, thanks, everybody.